Manager update, the radio city, radio system communications upgrade, personnel policy amendment, personal leave, ordinance amendment food truck and ordinance amendment downtown parking. Those are our agenda items. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tonight we have public comment. Is anybody here to make public comment? Hearing none, I won't go into the description. All right, we'll start right with new business. Tonight we've got a couple of awards. And we've got one from the gas authority, a marketing excellence award, and I'll read this to you. During the 2023 MGAG Annual Membership Meeting, the city was presented with the 2022 Marketing Excellence Award by the gas authority. As an acknowledgement of their exemplary achievement in achieving the highest customer growth within a member gas system with a distribution network of less than 1,000 meters. In the contemporary market, promoting natural gas presents a challenging undertaking. Therefore, securing a commitment from a developer to utilize natural gas fixtures represents a noteworthy achievement. The ability to effectively market the product and establish such a commitment signifies commendable efforts on the part of the city staff. I would like to express my gratitude and appreciation to the West Point team for their exceptional work in securing these future customers. Your hard work, dedication, and unwavering commitment to excellence have made a significant impact to the city. Your ability to collaborate, communicate, and execute with precision and efficiency is a testament to your teamwork, leadership, and professionalism. Thank you for your exceptional work, and please note that your efforts are truly appreciated. Got this pretty award. Put out here. And we also have an Electric Cities of Georgia Jeff Cook Award for Safety Excellence. The Georgia Municipal Safety Tax Force presents to City of West Point Electric Department for their dedication and commitment to achieve an environment and culture of safety and excellence, awarded designation platinum. Doing our best, safety always. Congratulations to you guys for that, too.
Congratulations.
Appreciate all your hard work. So with that, we'll move on to the city manager update. Ed, if you'll come up?
All right. Got a couple of items for you tonight. Want to talk a little bit about River Park Trails. Some of you may have received a letter from the Sierra Club over the last month or so. They were talking about condition of the trails. Everything they described in the letter they sent is true. The trails have gotten in poor condition over the years. But we've been working to make some things, some improvements over there. But I wanted to go back just a little bit and just as a recap for how we acquired that property over there was through the Trust for Public Land. Early in the 2000s through, well, 2000 through 2008, that process took place. And we ended up with about 350 acres of land. The city just paid the legal fees and staff time and things like that. There was a donation made that actually purchased that property. Once the property was purchased, at that time, there was a group of volunteers here and some people that were interested in adventure racing. And so what developed was a lot of single track trail inside of the park. So it just narrowed like a hiking trail, not a wide trail. Therein lies some of the issue that we had was that many people didn't want to go out on those trails, use those trails. It didn't feel safe to them, you know, to be out there. And two, they're just physically challenging because they, you know, they just follow the terrain of the land. And the more challenging for people that are running an adventure race or riding a mountain bike, the better. But over time, we lost a lot of that usage, so we have very few people that were actually using the trails compared to even our small population. So probably it's been three or four years ago, we had a trail consultant come in and look at the trails and tell us what they thought that we needed to do. And they said that the trails needed to be wider, 10 feet wide at least. Not the trail itself, but an opening of 10 feet wide, everything. It needed to be open where people could see where they were. And, you know, not so much following the terrain, but making a flat, easy, walkable trail for families and people of that nature. So the drawing that you've got there kind of shows three trails. The Heritage Trail is already in place. It's a concrete trail. Maintenance is sometimes an issue on that, but we try to keep it cleaned up and we're going to improve on that. The Chattahoochee River Trail, we're currently working on now, clearing all the underbrush. The trail is pretty much widened around the whole loop. And we're working to make that much nicer and improved. The Muskogee Ridge Trail will be the third phase of the trail, which will require a lot of realignment and improvement to make it where you can actually use it if we're talking about having something that's fairly easy to walk. And there's a lot of that single track trail, the narrow trail that are inside of these areas. We're just going to abandon those trails altogether. No maintenance on those at this time. People still walk some of those trails. But if we focus on the main loop trails, then as time goes on, we're maintaining those, some of those other trails can possibly be added back. And then we've got an expansion beyond all that of the 125 acres to the north that the city also owns that we've done nothing on that property. So then we can have discussions about what to do with that and how to make that work. So I just wanted to let the council know that certainly there have been some issues with accessibility into the park. We've lost some of that trail space and some of that's not being maintained at this time, but we are working to improve those areas. Any questions on that?
Can you get rid of the snakes?
Can't get rid of the snakes. They're just a natural amenity we get to enjoy.
They're part of the trail, aren't they?
They are. Second item is water intake project. This is to improve the water intake at the water treatment plant on State Line Road. We've been working on it for quite some time and we've talked about it. You know, our funding that we receive through the ARPA funds is set aside for this project. The property is part of that Trust for Public Land, land transfer that we received years ago with park space. So in order to move the intake to their property, we need to get their permission. We finally got them that permission. They want us to build another trail to maintain on that property as part of the permission to put the intake there. That's a bridge we'll cross when we get there, a trail we'll build when we get there. We have also applied for federal funding through the Corps of Engineers for $8 million. That should be more than we need to do the project, but that's what they recommended. We've applied for it. It's a 730 match grant. So the 1.3 million that we have right now, if it were the full cost, wouldn't cover it, but we have some reserves in water and sewer. It's a project that we need to do in order for us to have capacity to grow and move forward. And that's the two items I've got for the report. Does anyone have any questions or any other issues?
Any comments, questions? All right, we'll just move on then to the radio city communications upgrade.
And I'm going to just, a couple of things on that, and I'm going to let Chief Stanley give you all really the presentation piece of this. But another question will be, how are we going to pay for this? And if y'all looked at it, it's $144,000 basically to do this upgrade. As we talked before, this really came to light when we had the tornado come through and it impacted our communications and we were completely out of communications for several hours. So we have applied for a assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $234,840, which will cover the cost of the radius. There's no guarantee we're going to get that funding. But what we're requesting is that we move forward this purchase because again, it's essential for the communications. Ed, Mr. Moon, stay here. We're asking for $144,222,000 to do the upgrade to an 800 megahertz radio system.
This upgrade was started in November of 2019, where we retained our license, put in a forward repeater site at the Davison Road tank, and purchased some mobile and portable radios for the police department. At that time, we spent about roughly $80,640. This current quote, it includes everything to convert fire and police to complete 800 megahertz system on a DMR system with licensing to work on a P25 system. DMR is just digital radio. P25 is a more of an analog style radio system. It'll work on either system. The reason we're needing to do this, we're currently working on UHF systems, which have become antiquated. Some of the parts on our system, they're beyond their age. Life expectancy, we can't find parts for them anymore. We currently have three antenna sites. Davison Road, which is our primary transmitter site. The Kia Water Tower is a repeater location. In that location, we have repeaters for both fire and police. At this time, that repeater site is 100% offline due to voter failures in the system. We can't bring it back on. We can't find parts. College Hill is our third system. We're only working at 50% capacity there right now because the police voter system is down there and we can't replace it. So only fire is working off that site right now. With the voters being down, the repeater systems being down, some of the issues we're seeing, we're seeing a lot more dead spots in town. The Miami crews, they can't talk from West Jordan Medical Center, East Alabama, back to West Point on the radios. We just can't get out because we don't have the repeaters in place. PD is running into more and more dead spots on theirs as well. They're not able to talk from Harris County Jail or Troup County Jail on radios. We're in the real life strictly on cell phones. Or they're writing their mileage down and just keeping it until we get back in radio range and passing it along that way. Some of the benefits will be by going to 800. The 800 DMR system we're looking at, it has increased range, greater penetration for outside of buildings. It also has noise, active noise cancelling in it. It takes out all the background noise. And as you know, fire and police, we work in less than ideal environments. So there's always a lot of background noise, so it helps take that out. The radios come with built-in GPS tracking in the vehicles and the portables. So if we had a firefighter, a police officer that separated from the vehicle and got in distress, as long as they had their portable with them, we could pinpoint exactly where they were at. Harris County is in talks right now, fixing to move to 800 so it'll allow us to be able to talk to Harris County also. Chambers County is also in talks right now. Troup County is currently on the 800 system. The license we buy will allow us to talk to them. We've asked for IDs on them. They refuse till they get their system upgraded. And they said it was possible once they got their system upgraded. And an intergovernmental agreement was reached between the parties. So once we have that, Hogan'sville is currently going 800. We will have 100% countywide radio communications for all public safety departments in the county. An added caveat bonus to us, we'll be able to talk to Harris County, which we respond a lot with, and Chambers County, Binghamland, East Alabama, who we respond and work with also. If they go 800, the only cost to the city will be a radio ID number, a very minimal fee just for Motorola or whoever to turn their IDs on. Last I heard, it was anywhere from $15 to $35 a license to turn it on, so you could talk to them. So very inexpensive on that. As Mr. Moon said, we did apply for the American Fire Grant, $234,840. The grant writer we used is JNCN Consulting out of Five Points, Alabama. Talking with them, they stated that the grant, the packet they submitted was a very strong packet, very good, has been approved. If the grant is received, the West Point match for the fees for consulting and the AFG match will be $21,000, which is $11,000 for the American Fire Grant and $10,000 for the consulting firm that did it. With any excess funds, they will be used to create a simulcast site at the Kia Water Tank, which will allow us, if we have, for instance, during the storm, power failure at the Davison Road site, it will automatically revert over to the Kia site to give us simultaneous backup. The only way we'll know the radios are down, a light will light up on our dispatch console. So we'll never really be out of radios unless we actually lose power to locations at one time. In the price of it, it includes three new dispatch radios. One for downstairs for the fire department, two to go to the secondary location at the fire department, a base radio station for the fire department, 15 mobile radios for all of the police and fire vehicles, as well as 35 portable radios for all the fire and police personnel. So everybody will have their own radio to take ownership of, which in turn will get longevity out of the radios due to just one person using it instead of it being used 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that quote includes all licensing, programming, installation, everything is included in that. Any questions? Thank y'all.
When would you think, I mean, if the grant's approved, whom would you expect to hear from that?
Talking to the consulting firm, they told me that they could be started anywhere from July to the end of September, first to October.
For approval of?
Is when the grants are awarded. So you're just in a waiting game on them right now to see if you're going to be awarded or not. And then after that, I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is for getting everything in place, actually spending money from the grant, all documentation, everything.
Right now, you're using a lot of stuff you should communicate.
Right now, we're using, in town, we're able to use our UHF radios. They're very broken, very distorted. We have a lot of dead spots in town where we can't communicate. One of the biggest is Third Avenue. If you get in Third Avenue and some of the buildings downtown, it's nearly impossible to get out right now. So we have a secondary backup system that we installed two years ago, a year and a half ago. Zello is a cellular base that runs through our radio. And we can use it also as a UHF radio through our cell phones. We've had to rely on that three times and take cell phones to dispatch and let them work off cell phones because we lost all of our radio site stuff. So we work basically off of that. And, you know, the biggest thing we're running into is it's becoming a officer and a firefighter, paramedic EMS safety issue. You know, we got in a situation where we needed help. Can we get out at that time when we need help? Myself personally, I've been jumped on two or three times in the process. Thank goodness I could get out when I needed help, you know? And I think we owe it to our employees and our employees' families to be sure that they have reliable radio communications to be able to get out and get help when needed. And also the 800, the state is that's, we can access program the state band, talk to GSP, GBI, whoever we need to on that band also. It'll all cross right over.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing back. Hope you get it. Next, we have personnel policy amendment, personal leave.
Yes, sir. We started looking at vacation time personal leave that we're asking to go to, really based on the fact that when an employee starts, they don't have any vacation time until their first year anniversary. That's the way it works with a lot of companies and it has in the past. And it's really not been questioned that much in the past, but over the last, you know, decade, five years even more, time off has become much more important than it seemed to have been in the past for folks. So that's really the reason why we opened the policy up, to take a look at that and see what we needed to do. And then all these other changes that are recommended really were just as a review of that particular policy. So I'll kind of go through these as listed in the executive summary, but in 6.5.1, we just would change it to personally instead of vacation leave. That doesn't really mean anything definition-wise, other than sometimes directors look at it, well, you're supposed to be taking vacation leave because this is vacation. Really, it's time that an employee should be able to use for whatever they want to use it for, I mean. So we want to change that terminology. Then 6.5.2, we remove that section altogether. 6.5.3 is the, currently is the one year, 40 hours, 40 years, 80 hours, 14 years, 120 hours. What we're proposing to change that to is start date 40 hours, two years, 80 hours, 10 years, 120 hours, and 15 years, 160 hours. So it gives you an additional week at 15 years. Again, longevity is an issue, just like hiring is an issue. So maybe if an employee gets in, has been here 10 years and they look at, hey, I'm going to get another week of vacation every 15 years, that may be a benefit to help us keep employees. And once they've been here 15 years, they're looking at 20 years possibly to retire, 40 days they are. So might help us create some more career opportunities for employees. The fire departments listed below that, their hours are different because they work 24-hour shifts, but those are increased number of hours because of the shift differences. The other sections are just removing some of those sections. The one that I would point to most is the 6.5.6, where we revised from, we did require an employee, we do currently today require an employee to get 10 days notice. We moved that to five days notice because it is more personal leave. So it's something that they might not have, it's not like you're scheduling your vacation to go somewhere vacation. It might be that, you know, you need to be off or something. So we're trying to be more flexible with that as well. Questions, concerns?
Yeah, a couple. Do they have to be consecutive where if you work here for a little while and then you go somewhere else and you come back? Is it cumulative that way? Maybe, maybe good, put that in the policy if it's not?
It's, no, it's not. If you leave and come back, it's, you know, basically you're starting over. Now, that varies. If you're leaving, you're only gone for, you know, a few months or whatever. We may, again, it's an incentive for somebody to come back, so we may have to be flexible on that and, you know, get them to come back. So it is circumstantial. So, I mean, you know, we try, again, it's a different environment today than it has been for most of my career. So we try to be as flexible as we can in the world, I think.
And if you have, say, a death in the family, is that covered under a different day?
We have a bereavement policy. That's separate.
Okay. And then medical, sick leave is different than this?
That's right.
Okay.
And I, you know, some places are combining everything in the personal leave. But I think sick leave is such a great insurance policy for the employee that I would hate to change that because if you do save that time, I mean, you could be out. Some employees can be out for a long time, you know, and get paid if they're sick. So we didn't want to include that in the personal leave policy.
Do they roll this over that are using annually, that use their hours?
No, it does not roll up.
Use it to lose it.
That's right.
Does sick leave time require that you be in the hospital or if you go to the doctor and bring an excuse? So how does the sick time work? We have to be in the hospital?
No, no. Most, you know, most any medical need that you have, even if it's a family member, you take them to the doctor, you can use sick time.
And sick time is roll up?
It does. It accumulates forever.
You don't have a cap on?
Would you know?
Will they get two weeks or what do they get a year?
How much is it? Eight hours?
Eight hours a month.
Twelve days, a year?
It's, it's a, it is a great benefit.
Yeah, it is. A year, that's half a year.
Hey, just stay healthy. All right, anybody have any questions on personal leave? All right, let's move on to food truck.
If you will look under this item, you'll look over on page three of five. We've had this request specifically, most recently, from Point University, who has a food trailer that they would like to locate on their property. It meets all the requirements of the ordinance with the exception of the section that I pointed to, which is section 6-5 by 3C. No mobile food vendor shall operate outside of the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. At the end of each business day operation, the vendor shall remove from the parcel, the mobile food vendor vehicle, and all materials associated with the business. So the ordinance requires the food vendor to move and then they come back the next day. Now, that's not, that's not a bad policy because it keeps people from setting up shop and, you know, having a mobile food truck parked in a location 24/7. And that was the intent of the ordinance. However, when you have a property owner in the area that wants to do this, that meets all the other requirements of the ordinance, what we're trying to do is create the potential for them to be able to do that. So this, these four items would create that environment where they could have a permanent location if they meet all of those requirements. They would have to establish permanent utilities. The power, water, sewer, gas would be optional. They would have to have a power and water separate from their existing business. They get tied to the same sewer if that was possible.
That's to remain there 24/7?
That's right. They would have to skirt, underpin, or whatever the unit, whether it be a trailer or a truck, to cover up the wheels and everything that makes it look mobile. They would have to pour 20 by 20-foot concrete pad if they didn't already have a hard surface pad there. And then they would have to set up outdoor dining with at least two tables and chairs there and have trash receptacles as well. It does provide the opportunity. We don't see that many of those occurring because mobile food vendors are only allowed in certain zoning areas. Most of downtown, they're not allowed at all. The only reason that this one will be allowed at that point is because they're, because of the current zoning that they have would allow it. Most of the other properties would not. So we're recommending that the council consider approving. Of course, this has to go to the planning board, so this is the first time kind of talking to y'all about it. If it goes to the planning board, then if they recommend it, we'll come back to y'all.
Is this just for Point students or is it for everybody?
It would be open to the public. You know, they've got the cafeteria right there. They just feel like this would give them more options for the students, you know, and give them something unique and different, a place to get some. And two, like they're saying, like in the summer, because they have some students here, instead of opening up the cafeteria, they could open this up and provide food from there, so.
So Ed, are you saying that we can have food trucks in West Point, but not permanent? I mean, unless they're on their own property and we need to require that.
Right.
But for instance, I'm just using that land. I know I can't. But if I rented that land, could I set up a food truck right there? But if I rented that land, could I set up a food truck right there?
Well, then.
I'm just asking, rent that land?
Yeah, there's a, there's all, if you look at this ordinance, there's a lot of requirements in here. You've got to be permitted. Again, you've got to move it each and every day. Your food truck has to meet all the requirements of the, the health department. It has to be, you can't be any closer, it cannot be within three hundred feet of an existing restaurant. And there's a lot of requirements in this ordinance, and it, it was to be restricted so that we didn't have somebody pulling up in a parking space in front of a downtown restaurant and, you know, throwing up the, the open sign. So, but yes, we do, we do allow them, but they're only in specific locations.
Because you know we're gonna get a lot of calls and a lot of questions about it, so just trying to get a little bit, to get understanding.
Right. Well, the, the ordinance already exists, it's there. This would just be again, it, it's, it's something that would give this opportunity and the opportunity for everybody else that had the right zone and had the location for.
It's three hundred and fifty feet from the door of a.
Three hundred and fifty?
Three hundred and fifty. Any other questions regarding that? Okay. And then finally downtown parking.
This is a requested amendment to the ordinance because we have some language in the ordinance that is well, it's confusing and it's not legal anymore. So um at one time in the past, the, the mayor council decided that they would try to regulate the business owners in the downtown area to stop the business owners from parking in front of their business. I don't know if y'all are on the council, I know I was not here when this was put in the ordinance, but that was the idea was that patrons were the only ones that could park on the city streets. I know years ago, we, we tried to figure out a way to enforce this because we had parking complaints downtown in front of businesses and it's just really not an enforceable part of the ordinance. But we do have, the next section of the ordinance says it shall be unlawful to, to park in any parking area that has been clearly marked by a sign or paint as being designated as a no parking or restricted parking zone. So that's how we enforce the ordinance downtown now. We got signs at eight to five parking, Monday through Friday. That's how it's enforced. We have a sign there, that's what it says, that's the rule you follow. It's not the section about the patrons and it actually says it's nine to five. And it gives the designated areas and all that. So when the police department writes a citation in downtown, people go to the ordinance, they find this sheet and they say, this is not what y'all's ordinance says. And they're right in their regard, but this is not what's being applied to them, it's the next section. Does that make sense? So what we want to do is we want to just delete, eliminate this entire section about the patrons and the business owners and the designated areas and all that. We put a sign up and say you can't park here or you're time restricted, that's the rule, not something else in the ordinance.
Yeah, those people probably do.
Does anyone enforce the parking downtown?
Yes, man.
Wait, we're right, getting involved?
Sounds like somebody knows who it's.
I've got a ticket before. If you go over that two hours, I got a ticket. Yeah. Twenty-five bucks.
It's lunch.
That's right.
Good lunch. All right. Is there anything else? The items on the business meeting for June twelfth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty PM will be the radio system communications upgrade, personnel policy amendment for personal leave, the ordinance amendment for the food truck, and the ordinance amendment for downtown parking. So any announcements this evening?
I don't have an announcement, but I do have something I would like to say.
Say it.
Uh this is in reference to the naming of the gym after Zelma Brock. While everybody knows Zelma is my cousin, family member, she worked so hard for West Point, the community, the children, so on and so on. I don't have to say anything about Zelma. But I think we were slighted when we did not get the naming of the school after her. She worked at that gym for many, many years and basically, I don't think what the people wanted. I mean, it was a group that came together and decided that they wanted to be na- to be named the gym. Well, why did we write all those letters? It's like we, they stalled us until they came up with something to do. But who do you work for? Do you work for the group that came up with naming the gym? Or do you work for the people, the people who elected you, the people who put you in office? And I think when election time comes up, I think we could, should consider the people that are on those boards who made the decision, who are you gonna work for? Are you gonna work for the people who put you in office? Or are you just gonna give us a substitute? We always get a substitute when anything comes to LaGrange, Georgia. Now, if you want to do something, get that pool fixed, because she worked over there at that pool. Kids cannot walk on, um cross that road to twenty-nine to get to the splash pad. I love the splash pad, but it's summertime. And the children in this community need something to do, and there is nothing to do. So somebody needs to work on getting that pool repaired. And it's not West Point's responsibility, it is under the rep. They told me, someone from LaGrange told me, that we should take splash money and repair the pool. Well, that's your pool, so why should I take my rent money and pay for something that's under you? So that's just my opinion, nobody has to agree with me at all. But um I said what I needed to say.
Is the gym air conditioned now?
It ain't used to be.
I know, but is it now?
Yes, it is.
It is now. Ooh, that's improvement, that place is hot.
Sandra, you know I agree with you because it was my idea to name the gym after Zelma, so I totally agree. Another thing, our kids can't learn to swim at a splash pad. I mean, they need a pool. Most of our kids cannot swim. And unless we um provide some swimming lessons or something for them, we're gonna have a lot of kids trying to swim and get drowned. Our kids doesn't live in an area where they have a pool in their neighborhood so they can just go. And most of the parents can't afford to have a pool put in their yard, so West Point could really use a pool and some swimming lessons for kids. They can't learn to swim right there or over there.
And you see on social media where LaGrange has a swimming pool and it's five minutes from each other, five minutes. We just asked them for one.
But those pools, they're, they're, some of the LaGrange residents are coming down to the Valley Sports Place to swim. My sister and other people are coming to the valley because those pools have limited access in LaGrange.
But your sister can drive there, these kids can't.
I know, but what I'm saying is, even though they have pools in LaGrange, they're not really open that much.
Well, they have pools, that's my point. They have pools.
There are.
We have nothing, nothing.
I agree.
That they can learn to swim, as Gloria said.
I, I, I'll attribute to this conversation, I think we need a pool in a bad kind of way. And if we do a summertime pool, it's open for Memorial Day, Labor Day, or maybe around there, it's not very long. It would be really nice if we had an indoor pool. With an indoor pool though, you gotta put, you gotta put all the facilities in there that, that run up the price, so it's gonna take some thinking and some, some cooperation and some with, with Shreve County.
You just said a mouse pool.
I know, I know. And, and it would, that's what, that's what we really need is, is something that not only can you learn how to swim, you could um, you could have exercise that could be just like the Valley Sports Place is now, but we don't have to go that big. I, I've been involved with building several aquatic centers. And the excitement that you can, that you get with the community and coming together with all of that, it's, it's, it's really, it's really great.
Now, question to you, are we gonna get, well, how much money did they, the governor give to them?
I was just about to stir that pot, but I thought.
Come on, let's stir it.
The county just got seven million dollars to put towards repairing a pool, building pickleball courts. Help me out here, what was the third item? Do you remember? There's a third item, I can't remember. I'll give you one guess.
Just maybe gave the county that much?
Yeah.
Gloria, uh Marty says that she and I need to start as our retirement project teaching swimming lessons.
We need a pool so y'all can do that.
Just remember where we are in that, kind of in that whole conversation is the existing pool, it, it would be like building a new pool. So there's no, it is the opinion that there is no value in trying to go in and do something with that pool. A new pool would be the right thing to do. And we have, we're gonna have somewhere around two million dollars at, at the beginning of twenty twenty-five to move forward with a recreation project, because that's what the council said, we're gonna keep that money. We're gonna go to the county commission with a project, which is what the, the commission chair told the mayor, to bring a project to the county commission and we will decide whether we want to support additional funding or not.
And we'll see if the county lives up to that, but y'all, it's, it's, a pool here is for the entire western side of Shreve County. Same way they ought to have a pool in Hogansville for the east side. I've got a couple in the middle. And it's not just a West Point pool, it's a, it's a Shreve County Parks and Recreation Pool for the like, you know, whatever communities want to use it. Look at it that way. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Can I win a stay?
I want to swim at Joe's house.
Swim at Joe's, big neon sign, swim at Joe's, swim at Joe's. Do you have a pool, Joe?
What, do you have a pool?
No, he was going down to the sports play.
Marty down there.
You mean the sports play?